I think we could get started. Um, for attendees, I know John Schwab is out of town this month, so he's not joining. Um, when we get to the presentation that he was down to do on the vote recommendation to City about the APL staff, since you were part of that conversation, I don't know if you want to add anything, but I can also just read what is under item number three when we get there. Um, and then, any oral communications?
No.
Um, approval of the minutes? Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, approved four zero.
Thank you, and next is building forward library infrastructure grant project update.
Thank you trustees for joining. There we go. Thank you trustees for allowing me to join you today. Here is your monthly update as far as where we are at in regard to the library infrastructure project. So, just as a quick reminder, this is a $10 million grant that has no matching requirements. The funds must be expended by March of 2026. We do have a series of unallowable expenses that I know that we're going to be working to address at the workshop that you will have coming up at the end of the month, but those include the fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, the temporary facility relocation costs, electronics, computers, card readers, any AV equipment, and then the outside ADA path of travel. We are currently working on the relocation of services plan that is in development. I have been working with Reno and his team to develop that, and we'll be coming back to you at a later date to share that, that plan with you. We are expecting right now 50% construction design by October 18th, so by Friday of next week, we should be at 50% construction design. So, um, right now, here is the anticipated timeline. That 100% construction design is expected by December 13th, and then that's when those plans get submitted to us for our building department to be able to review, to conduct a plan check, and then provide comments back to the, um, the design development team that we're working with. Once they have made those changes, addressed those comments, then at that point, the, um, they resubmit and we do plan check changes again. That's usually a pretty quick turnaround time because we've made all of our comments in the beginning. At that time, we will also start the permitting process, which is, uh, means that we're very close to, you know, moving forward. Uh, the bidding process is expected to start in early February, that is when we go out to bid, uh, and, uh, that is a minimum of 30 days, so we are required to do a minimum bid process of 30 days. Right now, the timeline that I've seen, the rough timeline, they've actually built in a six-week period. Uh, I have requested from the project manager at Vasquez to be able to reduce that to the minimum 30-day timeframe, just based on the condensed timeframe that we have to complete this project. With that, earlier today, uh, he and I met, we also discussed when that bid is going to go to council for award. We are looking at April 16th, 2025 is when it will actually go to council specifically for the award of that bid. At that point in time, uh, we will expect all the bid construction documents to be completed, and then sometime in May of 2025, that construction project will start. We're looking at approximately 10 months right now, so that's the timeframe we're looking at with the completion of the project by March of 2025. So, that, that's the, uh, that's the update for today. Um, do you have any questions? I'll leave that up there so you can continue to look at that estimated timeline.
I, I think at the last meeting it was mentioned anywhere between six months and 12 months for the construction. Um, just how did we land at 10? Um, is that just an estimate because we're at 50% now?
Right. Um, we will actually not know fully what that closure is going to look like until we have much closer to 100% uh, design. They are estimating right now 10 months. I know that's a conservative estimate, uh, so we're hoping it'll be a little bit sooner. Um, I can't tell you I'm not the project manager, uh, but that's the, um, timeline that was provided to me for today.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Robert, thank you so much. Um, there's the requirement for the 30-day bidding process. Is there a requirement for the minimum number of bids you would need as the city to be able to award the contract?
Uh, there, I don't believe there is, but I would have to, um, consult with Ed, who is the project manager on that.
Okay, yeah, so, because my concern is, right, we don't get enough bids, you have to go back and get enough period again.
That is a, a question that I had for Ed as well.
Okay.
Earlier today, is be like, okay, um, because mostly what I was concerned about is not necessarily the minimum number of bids, what I was more concerned about was the scope of the project, actually. Um, because sometimes what we will find is that the scope of the project may be so large that would be outside of the project budget. So, what we are looking at doing is, in that period of time, we'll be looking at what is the minimum amount of, um, what are the minimum projects that we want done, and then from there, we do something called bid alternates, and that allows us to actually be able to add those in. Uh, because the scope of the project is bid as it's bid, we don't have control over that, that's what they're bidding for, we can't remove items from that scope of that project. But what we can do is we can add items through something called the bid alternate. So, for example, if we've determined that the highest priority is roofing, that would be in the scope of the project, but maybe plumbing or some of the electrical work would be a bid alternate. So that allows us to say, we for sure need a roof, but then we can add in, depending on what the cost is, to add those additional items that would allow us to be able to add, and that provides us with much more flexibility of what that looks like. And so, based on that, he and I were fairly confident that we will get a reasonable number of bids and be able to scope out the project that way.
Okay, great. Um, so my background, right, is in government contracting for defense companies. One of the things that we do is, um, we have a, a scope of work in options, which sounds like your bid alternate. Um, I, I guess I, I have, um, well, I had a question and then it just totally left my mind. Um, one of the things that we do, right, or when we're seeking work from the government is they'll say like, oh, an RFP is coming out soon, like they kind of blast out so that, you know, all of us defense contractors can be like, oh, let's bid to that. Are we doing something similar to kind of let everybody out there know that we're, we're, you know, this is coming up in February, we'd really like bids, so that we have an appropriate number to source from?
They do have, um, a process by which they do that, um, and I don't know what that specific process is, you'll, you'll forgive me, that is outside of my general scope of, of duties and responsibilities. Um, but, um, I can tell you that when I'm doing like an RFP, I also oversee our public art program.
Yeah.
And so, when we do that, we put that information on our website in preparation for that, um, call for artists that will be going out. We also, um, seek to utilize our networks that we have available to us to be able to put that information out, and I would presume that they have the same thing.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just, you know, don't want to get to February and then, you know, 30 days is quite a short term.
It is. I, I, I completely understand that, especially for the scope of this project, because we're looking at, um, uh, probably about $7 million for this project, because the 3 million's already taken up for a couple of other things, including the consulting agreements that we already have in place, and then that 10% contingency that we're looking at. So, again, we're looking at about a $7 million project, and yes, that is a huge project for a very short period of time. I fully grasp that.
Okay.
With the bid alternate system, um, I know we're at 50% project definition right now. Have those priority, uh, projects been identified? And if so, when would we be able to see what those priorities are?
So, those have not been identified yet. Um, those would be identified once we hit the 100% construction design, because in that process, we are allowed 30 days to be able to review those construction documents, um, review them, and then provide comments back to the consultant or the architect that is part of the process. During that period of time, that also comes with a approximate cost or budget for each of those items, and that's when we would make those decisions.
Um, and I, I would imagine that we're, would also factor in, right, let's say plumbing was not one of the priority projects, but you would also need to factor in if, in the future, we would need to go back and is it going to cost us more to, you know, rip out what was already done, um, as part of other priority, priorities to now address this secondary issue.
So, one of the things that Ed and I spoke about this morning, the concern is that some of these, um, areas are very closely linked together. So, you, you mentioned plumbing. So, if we chose not to do plumbing, that also means we don't necessarily move bathrooms, add bathrooms, that kind of thing. So, all of this is very closely interlinked, and it's just a matter of what is a priority, and then what is also linked together versus what is not linked together, and kind of making it fit to the best way that we possibly can. So, I can't answer that question fully, but...
I imagine that it would be a little bit complex.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Robert, thank you for the time and effort that you have provided to, to give us an update today and for being here late, and I was just thinking, thank goodness that we got so lucky that there's no Padre game scheduled for right now. We just hit it right on the day, and that was convenient for us, so.
Absolutely, because I was at the game a couple of days ago, hence why my voice is still a little crunchy. So, I get it.
Um, so I just have a couple of questions. Um, did, how is it going to come about, or is there any update, if the city would cover the ADA path outside of the library?
So, that is something that we've tasked the, um, Public Works Director to do. Uh, he is currently out of the office, on vacation. He returns on the 21st, um, and so, that is when he's going to have, start having those conversations with the city manager's office and what that looks like.
Okay, and then for the workshop plans, I think you plan to attend, is that correct?
That is correct.
And will you guys, between you and Reno, provide a list of things that aren't covered and the approximate cost that it would be with a, a guess, or I guess we would follow up with more information if we needed it, depending on what the other foundations are interested in covering?
Yeah, we will have, um, that list, and, and actually, we can go back to just the general list right here.
Uh-huh.
We will work together in kind of, um, planning that out a little bit more to give you more specific costs.
Okay, and, um, if anyone, um, and any decisions are made to fund any of these, um, when would you need, like, the final say that so-and-so foundation plans to sponsor whatever it is, um, to work it into the timeline?
Uh, that's something that I plan on meeting with Ed, leading up to that specific meeting, to be able to ask him more, more carefully and pointedly, these things, if they are covered by an outside entity, when do we need to know, and when do those payments, if you will, need to be made?
Okay, and is there any update on, uh, if you guys have talked about any relocation plans, and, I, I'm sorry if you've covered that already?
So, we, we have been in conversation about relocation. In fact, uh, myself and Reno's team, we visited a couple of possible sites and locations. Uh, we have, um, again, we spoke this morning about what also that might look like. We, um, he's getting me some additional information, because we are going to look at exploring through our vast network of owned properties within the city, what might be available, instead of maybe parsing things out, um, you know, collection here, collection there, kind of a thing, if we can house you all in the same location as a possibility. So, we're trying to explore all possibilities. The expectation is that we will have information for you either in December or January to provide you with a specific relocation plan at that time.
Okay, thank you. Also, last thing is, could, could you please share, um, this presentation with the board through email?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, great, thank you, Robert, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three, and this was a topic that John brought up. Um, I believe it, it rooted from a conversation with the city, and Carolyn was there?
Okay. Do you want me to chime in here? Okay, great. Um, so when we went and visited, um, with the city, uh, I think it was two months ago now, to talk through this, the plan for, um, the infrastructure grant, um, we got on the topic of, you know, if we're to close down the library for a period of time while construction is ongoing, what happens to the staff? Um, and, uh, I think that we were all kind of in agreement that the staff is funded, right? Uh, and, um, as such, we would keep them on board. Um, I think that John wanted to kind of put that up to a vote for all of us, uh, just so that the city understands what our position is, um, you know, that we would like to keep them on, um, or not, so I guess that would open the discussion.
Um, I just wanted to check in with Reno, because I don't believe he was in that discussion, correct?
He was not there.
Okay, and so Reno, what are your thoughts on this?
So, on our end, we of course would love to have all our staff continue to be employed during a period of the renovation, um, and currently, as we discuss with Robert and the city, uh, possible alternate locations, temporary locations, we are baking in staff as currently staffed during those plans. Um, the one thing I'll note is if we end up having a vacancy in a position that might not be essential during the temporary close, we might decide not to rehire during the temporary close, uh, and use those funds maybe in other ways to support operations. Um, but our plan is if nobody leaves, we keep everybody, and that's the plan and mindset we have during this planning period going forward.
I guess my question is, and I don't know who can help answer this, but the library's funded through the end of 2026, is that correct? And then, or through June 2026? And currently, the plans are static for the 10 months, could be 12 months, could be longer. Um, I just don't know what the fine print looks like and how long we're actually going to be able to support the staff if this project takes longer than expected.
That's a, that's a great question. Um, the, the short answer is yes, the library is funded through an agreement that was passed by the city council, um, in early July of this year. Uh, that is funded through, uh, June 30th of 2026 with ARPA funding. So, that is guaranteed funding. I have had conversations with the city manager's office, and their expectation is the same as Reno's, which is the same as mine, which is that we would expect all of the library staff to continue functioning and operating, uh, regardless of the closure during that, you know, 10-month period. Um, what I will say, though, is that we cannot have this extend beyond March of 2026, because that is our funding deadline. It is a hard deadline, uh, there is no way for us to move past that deadline, that is when it has to be completed. So, um, so we are fully funded up until June of 2026, which is after that hard grant deadline.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
So, with, with the vote that, or that's been proposed, um, do we put constraints on it then, based off of what Robert just said, that, you know, that all staff will retain employment through March 2026? Because that's when we, we need to have the grant funding done, um, and I'm, I'm not sure if we need to add, what Reno proposes is, sounds like hiring chill in the event of someone leaving.
I mean, I don't think we need to define the date, I think we're asking that the staff be, uh, you know, kept in, employed during the renovation. So that we're not defining the date because that's a moving target.
And we could say, we could say up to the discretion of the library director, so that Reno can, you know, freeze hiring if he determines it's not a, it's not a, uh, super needed position at the time.
And we're just making a recommendation to the city?
Yeah.
Need motion? Any other question? Motion to approve?
I second.
Hey, now who tells the city what we did?
Okay, approved four zero. Schwab is out.
Thank you. Um, okay, so next we have the presentation of monthly statistical report and strategic plan updates.
All right. So, nothing major changed, um, still steadily continuing on the stats. I, I will, like, mention the red number, uh, on library visits, that was a placeholder because we found that there was a technical glitch with the way we count our visits, which is our gate counters. Uh, they had not been counting for the entirety of August and September, but they were, or at least they weren't being reported in the portal that we use to gather the data. They were counted, but that didn't appear until this month, where I saw on, on October 10th, or, no, 8th, it was two days ago, um, that there was like 56,000 visits, and so, the reality is during August and September, we are essentially dividing the 56,000, so it's really closer to 25,000 in August and around 21,000 in September. But at the time of writing this report, we hadn't caught that, and we were still waiting to hear back what had happened, and so we put in a placeholder, and we were actually a little, we're fairly close, we always average around 25,000, uh, visits each month. Other number also mentioned, because we haven't been discussing website visits in the past few sessions, is that I am working with city's IS department, communications department, to get more accurate stats on the website. Currently, we're working with an intermediary, Civic Plus, for the website, and we're trying to get access to library-specific data rather than kind of the whole city. They give me, they send me a screenshot of what the, the top website visits are, pages, and so I'm trying to get it so we can get specific library page stats, uh, but that's getting a little bit longer than I anticipated, um, but we might have to retroactively update some of these numbers. Um, most likely will go up rather than stay where they're at, but that's just something I wanted to mention. Any other questions about any of the stats for August?
I did have one question. Someone in the community asked about online booking of rooms at the library, and I don't know if that's actually on the website or not, um, so I said I would ask the question tonight, but I also don't know if we could somehow in the future get stats.
We, we can provide stats for how many reservations have been made by the public. Currently, the only rooms that are bookable are the tourniquet room, and that's it for these, our location. Matha Center has the classroom and some other spaces that are reservable, uh, those are not managed by the library directly. We work with, uh, community services to manage Matha Center, uh, but we can certainly start adding tourniquet room stats, and then post-renovation, if we, if we get the study rooms as planned, those would be included in the reservation system, and those would be reservable through the website. Our calendar system has that functionality, but because the tourniquet room is so highly used by staff and requires a lot of staff oversight and approvals, we don't really include it. There is a link, but most of it is all done through a staff member who coordinates all those reservations and makes sure that any payments required are processed and received. Uh, but in the future, we can certainly add tourniquet room stats. Uh, off the top of my head, I think, almost about every other weekend, there is some sort of recital or something like that, uh, in the room if there's not a program in there.
I'm also thinking, pre, post-renovation, it'd be good to have those stats to see, um, how, how it changes potentially, um, just because of the space being renovated, but...
Um, I think there's one more, not, it's not noticeable in these stats, but I will mention that, um, since the change in Hoopla, uh, the, both the budget cap and the decrease in the number of borrows, the stats for Hoopla have, as expected, dropped dramatically. Uh, I think, I would almost say it's down by about 75%. Uh, and so I'm keeping a close eye to see how that goes. Um, we have received a number of calls and emails about Hoopla, and what we've been trying to do is encourage users to use either Overdrive or whatever other online platforms, and also pressing staff to be more active in managing Overdrive, so being more reactive to old requests, keeping old ratios down, and spending more more actively, rather than in the past where it was a little bit more passive. Uh, so we're trying to instill more training in that regard, to kind of balance out the fact that Hoopla's users are going to be lower. Then the, the total number of unique users for Hoopla actually did increase, so the number of people using it are more, but the total number of checkouts is less just because of the limits that we had to impose. That's all really clear here, and I'm happy to know you love Hoopla stats, um, but just be aware that the growth might not be as much unless Overdrive takes up, picks up the slack, and then we'll see continued growth. I mean, you can see here, one from July increased, and I believe it's September also, it was more than August.
All right, I have, uh, sorry, I have a follow-up question, um, regarding the tourniquet room and the study pods. Um, so it's from my understanding that the tourniquet room, there's like fees associated per hour, what have you. Um, are the study pods going to be free with a library card, or will there be a fee associated with those?
Our current expectation and the way I plan for it is that those study pods will be free, but would be based on a reservation system, and typically, the standard practice is to give each user about two hours of time, uh, per day, and then the next person gets it. And that might be adjusted depending on the popularity and use, but that's typically a little bit what is done in libraries. Same with the study rooms, that is the expectation. Um, however, whether there's any fees for any other rooms, like say, the, the flex space, maker's space, or anywhere else, that would be a conversation we would have to have with the managers and also with US advisors, for whether we would want to have any fees and what those would look like.
Okay, I would just want us to, um, pay some special mind, whatever the reservation system is for the study pods, um, because I could, I could see the community getting confused if it's on the same page as the tourniquet room, um, just jumping to the assumption that the study pods are going to be, uh, a required fee. Um, so I think we, we do just kind of need to be careful of the, the optics about that reservation system.
Right, and we can definitely put in wording and make it a little bit clearer once we get to that step, to make it more obvious or as obvious as we can, and of course, if they have any questions, they're always welcome to call staff or reach out.
Reno, how do you explain the 600-person growth of live off-site programs for August?
I believe that was a number of outreach events.
Okay.
That we did, I think that included, I think, rape day.
Rape day, okay.
And, and I think the night out event.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, night out event was in August, and I think rape day was around that time as well. So, those are the big ones, where we've had a lot of success at our tables and, and those kind of, which is a point of going out and meeting. All right, if there's no more questions on the stats, I'll move over to the strategic plan. I won't go into all the details, but I will mention that, um, as a side, because I didn't include in my record report, um, we are close to finalizing our annual report, and this year's annual report is presented through the lens of strategic plan, um, so you can look forward to that fairly soon. Um, as far as strategic plan, this is goal two, embracing emergent services. Let me think, if there's anything I want to highlight here? I'll mention that the In-N-Out reading program just started.
Oh.
So that was on October 5th, that is running through November 16th, and so, anybody that has friends or family, children, they're... So anybody that has friends or family, children, they're welcome to submit the reading. This works on a state platform as a summer reading program and they can get some free cheeseburgers or hamburgers or vegetarian alternatives at In-N-Out if they so choose. It's very popular, I know, they told me that they already have a number of registrations for it and it is linked on our website and it'll be going out again on our newsletter.
Does the annual report go out to the city council?
It was mailed, I, it does. I, last, last year's report, I made sure it was printed and given to the city managers through that strategic council. And I believe, you should have received one, if you didn't, please let me know. It could be last year's and this year's when this one's done.
I just wonder, Virginia, if, because I think last year, right, we did like a presentation to the council, right, about, you know, what the library's been up to. I wonder if you could give them the, you know, a presentation on the annual report? Just give them, I'd like to get in front of them, you know.
Yeah.
But we're still here, we're still thinking about stuff.
Yeah, that sounds good. And I think last time we were invited.
We were.
And we haven't been invited back.
Oh.
But I could definitely reach out and see. The other thing that I do need to do, it's on my list, is we've had Christian Garcia in for a tour and the mayor, and I need to reach out to the other council members to give them a one-on-one time with Reno to get an idea of what's going on. So I plan to do that this month, this month and October too. So, good, good, thank you for bringing that to the forefront.
And I'll mention, most likely for our next meeting, I'll be able to do a presentation for you on our annual report and you're welcome to use same slides that I prepare or modify them or whether you go to council or if you'd like to be there as well, I'm, I'm also willing to be there.
Thank you.
But are there any questions about the strategic plan? See if there's anything, we've continued to add in more Spanish titles and we have, like I mentioned earlier this year, the budget for Spanish has increased. As we look forward towards the temporary locations, keeping Spanish collections is still a priority, so we're not going to come out.
Sorry, so Reno, just to confirm, with this support parents as child's first teachers, you're doing that programming in both English and Spanish?
Yeah, we have a number of programs.
And of course, literacy in both. Okay, great.
Yes, we have currently our Thursday programs, we have a lot on Storytime and that has been potentially used twice a month, every month. And focusing on Hispanic heritage, we also now have, this week we have our One Book One San Diego Spanish language for children's collection, the book is playing for Storytime. And also.
For a second?
Yes.
Sorry, I just want to piggyback on that is, I think it was also your first bullet point here at the top was the newsletter.
Yes.
And I appreciate that you sent that out and updated it to add that information because that, I have notes here somewhere, that one book. Information that you shared was very significant, I had no idea that there was such thing. And I also appreciate the Hispanic heritage display you have at the front. But that, that October newsletter and you, you just spoke about it, the One Book One San Diego, was, the children's election was Barrio Rising.
Yes.
And it caught my attention because it was about the protest that built Chicano Park, which is right here in San Diego. And I didn't know that Chicano Park was the largest mural in the US. And so I clicked on the link, I went down a rabbit hole, I learned a lot. And why this is significant for me is because my parents were part of that protest in Chicano Park in nineteen seventy. My parents are painted on the Chicano Park mural. Yeah, they're painted on the, on one of the murals in Chicano Park. And I learned a lot from that link that you sent out in October, so I really appreciate that. That really meant a lot to me.
I love hearing that and I'll say, it's been a goal to enhance the newsletters and what we offer through them as a means of reaching the community and the fact that we have about twenty thousand recipients each month. Now, I'm not all read it, but ideally some of them will and on average, it's around five thousand, that will open three to five thousand, depending on the newsletter. Around twenty-five or thirty percent click-through rate. And we're now looking to add additional items to the newsletter. One key item that we're looking to add is highlights of our read local, shop local and we're trying to reinvigorate that to re-engage the businesses, especially here in the downtown. And because our newsletter roots is so many and they're all local, that is a big selling point, we're trying to advertise for business partners as why they should partner with the library, what that means as being part of the community and being a community hub, that is one of our strategic goals. Any other questions or comments and any other points in the strategic plan updates? I was mentioning before, I forgot. We are also reinvigorating our one thousand most reported kindergarten. So currently, we're redoing the graphics, the approach, the marketing, and we're looking to have a soft launch for the new, the invigorated program next month and if not, at the latest in December to kind of prelude into our winter reading challenge. We'll start in January. Oh, also, San Diego Poetry Annual is a very nice event that happens at number seven. So that was in partnership with one of the local poetry organizations and we had a good turnout for that. Any other questions before we move on?
I had a question, just a comment, but the, the social media with the images has really taken it, taken it to another level. So whoever's responsible for that, kudos.
I'll pass that on to our new marketing coordinator, Esther. I've been really happy to see how much we've been getting engagement through the photos and it's been a key goal of adding and improving how many photos we have because it does show the impact of the library through the public.
Thank you, Reno. We can move on to your updates.
All right, so a few points. I'm not going to read everything, but I did want to bring to your attention that recently Governor Newsom did sign a law called California Freedom to Read Act. This act primarily codifies the free-to-free, but also sets standards for what libraries need to do to ensure that they're allowable, ensuring free and open access to information as a public library. So essentially, the main impact for the law locally for us is that we have to submit our collection development plan to the state librarian. You might not believe it, but some libraries did not have collection development plans. We do, and I know that US agencies have been very involved in crafting that plan. Likely later this year, we're going to take a look at the plan to see if there's any need to change it. I don't anticipate very many changes, any, because our plan is so robust and very well thought out. So we don't really need too much, but I will take another look to see if there's anything in the law that we might have missed, but it's unlikely, the main goal is to submit it to the state. And some of the, the points of law are essentially having a recourse for the public to be able to review and submit their thoughts on materials and who is responsible for that and what that process looks like, but we already have that all written out, so there's not much for us to do. What I do have to look into is there is some language in the law that includes how staff also plan for in-library displays and also discussions of materials in programs and events. And that might require us that we include or update policies for programming in the library and possibly displays in the library to align with this law.
Has the city attorney reviewed the law?
They have not, from my knowledge.
Okay. And then does the law prescribe what we are to do in our plans or it just says, please provide?
It's very general and it's very broad, so it doesn't prescribe anything specific other than the need that we have to submit it to the state and that there has to be a process for review and discussion discourse with the public.
Okay.
It does prescribe what cannot be done, let me see, let me just pull it up. Essentially, the may, I'm trying to see if there was a section. Basically, the Overdrive person's right to use a public library's free service should not be denied or reserved solely because of the personal characteristics, age, background, or views. That's a big point. And also, this section protecting library staff where they cannot be punished for making sure that materials are available to the public as long as everything aligns with the library's collection development policy. So if they put something out and somebody objects, there's not going to be retaliation against that staff member. So that's one of the other points in this law of protecting. I do encourage you all to take a quick look. The state librarian sent out an email in support of it and I'm happy to send that over. But essentially, there's not much impact on us directly because we are essentially already in alignment with the law. It's supposed to be minor pleading potentially when we get around to addressing policies later this year.
A couple of months ago, we had discussed the policy regarding a certain age limit minors checking out. So will, will that change based on this new policy?
That is a question we'll have to go around to probably asking the city attorneys interpretation because this does include some elements of age. And so how that corresponds with the other discussion, which had to do more with access to patron records. There are different discussions, but there could be some overlap. I can't say for sure, I can't speak to that right now, but I think it's a good idea to send both those policies and the laws to the city attorney to kind of give their opinion as far as whether there's any impact or not. Oh, great. The next point, I just wanted to give you the update that we did apply as a partner to the regional grants. So these are part of the, I remember the name, Digital Equity Competitive Grant Program. So this is a federal grant program that's offering billions of dollars across the country to improve digital equity and access to computers and technology and broadband across the nation. Here in San Diego, we worked with the county San Diego, City San Diego and the various libraries and other entities in the area. The grant application that was submitted is called San Diego I Work. For us here locally, we, our ask was to act as a host and partner for some of the other non-profits and non-resorts organizations that are supporting the grant. As part of it, we did ask for some equipment and some tech to help support both the grant project and also our local needs. So that includes some laptop dispensing kiosks. So rather than having just the stations that are out in public, they'll be able to check out a laptop for use in the, in the library. So that expands the number of units in the location. So it's aligned as well with the plan of having more seating and space for the public post the infrastructure grant project. We also asked for a set of laptops for classes and workshops for my staff along with the necessary accessories for that, including projectors and charging accessories. And last but not least, we also asked for funding for hotspots that will be able to circulate. So with those three components, laptop kiosks and laptops for in-library use, class equipment, and then hotspots, we're trying to increase the access locally through library services for digital equity here in Escondido. And that will cover a five-year period, really four years plus one year of evaluation. And the overall grant, I believe, is asking for around twelve million. So our ask is relatively small, it's around a hundred thousand and it's matched, which is around ten percent, is fully matched by staff time and space use. And you'll be able to hear more about it if rewarded later this year.
I noticed some of the, the partners, it says additional computer classes are planned and expected from the other grant recipients. I'm familiar with or can deduce from their names what they provide or, you know, who they serve. But I don't know if any of these actually serve seniors.
I believe.
Is it maybe the San Diego Regional Center?
It might be the Regional Center. I'm fairly sure that seniors were one of the age groups that are targeted by the grant.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember which one of the organizations.
Okay.
Is specializing, I know computers, kids, for example, is specializing in children.
Yeah.
Some of the other ones are specializing in our Spanish-speaking population, immigrant population. I do think it's about the Regional Center and I think Empoli in San Diego has some for teenagers.
Okay.
But I don't remember from my memory which one is the one that's targeting specifically seniors.
Okay, I, I would just ask you to consider that when you're determining programming as our part of the grant, right, and considering our, our senior population in that.
Yes, and on that note, we are, we have charged our all services staff to start developing computer classes for in-library use. And hopefully, if we get these laptops, we'll be able to incorporate that. Otherwise, we'll have to do it more lecture style or use some of our current equipment, which is a bit limited, but we do that around ten laptops. And last but not least, Play For All Day, Pick Up Day, we started purchasing materials with our Play For All funds. The activity period will start next week, so starting from the end of October, end of Friday of next week through March of next year. The grant period will be, we'll be asking some surveys and all of our Storytime and children's programs will incorporate elements of the Play For All grant and our manipulatives during Storytime, toys. And I'm working with corporate in the city to then make purchases for the new furniture that'll go in the public play area as part of the grant as well. And of course, any of the new items we buy, we're going to plan to also Google with us wherever location we end up, that's certainly primarily the children of the community. Quick highlights, I won't go over everything. We have, of course, Second Saturday continues to do well. I was very impressed by Echoes of Change, so this was exploring history through protest music. You can see that on the first image. We're going to try to ask them back because not, I was sort of aware that it would also live music. I was going to be pre-recorded, but I was very happy to learn that it was live music and they discussed protest songs and their impact. So we had around twenty people attend that and so we want to try to reconnect with Desert Posse Music, which was ahead, to do more of this type. So it's kind of an enhanced version of a Second Saturday concert where we have more of a lecture and explanation with live music. For the Pioneer Room, I'm also very excited to mention that the Pioneer Room is working to create a Latino history, Latin history, and Escondido project. So we're trying to collect more stories from our Hispanic community, our Latinx community here in Escondido because we are, it is a community that has not really been observing the history at the same level and has some of our other communities here in Escondido, but it's a major part of our history. So we're trying to make it outreach effort and to bring in more Spanish language and Latinx and Hispanic community member histories into the Pioneer Room collections.
Do you guys partner at all or send that over to the Library of Congress? Because I know they have their, their StoryCorps, right?
Yep, they have StoryCorps and the Voices of America.
Yeah.
That could be something you can look into. They haven't done that in a while, but we can look into them. We're always looking for additional funding for these types of projects. Right now, our main partner in a lot of these events is the History Center. We work with them basically every week, so we have very close partnership with them.
I'd like to see our stories go.
Yont.
Yes.
And finally, Youth Services, we did launch our first Brick Holders Club. So this is our tween age program is the target. So the bulk of materials for this program were bought through the rapid receipt through the Best Mind Search Foundation. through the grant received through the Best Mind Foundation, and we're making our way through buying more Legos and similar manipulatives, and also creating a little station in the children's space, we're just waiting on finalizing the furniture selections for that, mostly it's going to be a table where they can have the Legos accessible during the day, but that is going to be the first piece of our new clean maker space or maker area. And that's it for me.
Would you guys start accepting donations of Legos, or is that?
Yeah, we do take Lego donations, and that's a great idea, and also pass it on to our children's librarian, because I hadn't really considered that, but Legos are all work together, so we probably just clean them, just like we do our, our regular Legos, and then put them back out, and then have some more diversity in the Legos.
It'd be a good idea to have like a landing page on the website of accepted donated items, because I'm sure it extends far more beyond books and CDs that the friends help generate money for.
Yes, we can certainly add more collection development.
I had a quick question, circling back to something we discussed a couple months ago, about one of the local high schools who has interns that work out into the community, and Zach mentioned that they usually host an intern at the city, so there's already like the foundation of bringing that person in, but I, I kind of like backed off on that because I knew the renovation project was coming up, but now that the renovation is start to set in May, and the high schools do internships like February, March, and April, are you still interested, and do you still want me to make the introduction?
I'm open to it, I need that confirmed with our staff, I know right now we're pretty pressed, as we anticipate a lot of our attention is going to have to go towards prepping for the closure, so it might not be possible for them to really dedicate the time and attention that we really need to have a successful internship program, but I'm always open to hearing what could be done.
Okay.
It's just, my concern would be whether we can really dedicate the time to give them a good experience and a worthwhile experience, rather than just kind of being a side project that doesn't get the attention it deserves, because staff are being asked to.
Right.
Empty out a building, and put everything away.
Yeah, okay, sounds fair, so I'll just make the introduction so that you have each other's contact information, and you can, they can circle back with you next year.
Exactly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I have, I saw that it's on the social media, it was shared that there was like an outage regarding the renewal system, can you expand on that a little bit, I know it's been resolved?
Yes, so we learned from our vendor that manages our library system, Polaris, that there was some sort of issue technically, that they couldn't figure out what had happened, and so it took them a bit of digging to figure out, we put out the message in that we were worried that people would get notifications saying that items were now due when they weren't. Of course, we don't have late fines anymore, but a lot of people don't really realize that yet, since not all the libraries are library, but we did put that out as a precautionary measure, so that way people weren't too concerned, and it did take them a few weeks to figure out what happened. I don't recall staff telling me exactly what the result was, but I can certainly look into that, because sometimes, I'll be honest, they update the system, and for whatever reason, that has a cascading effect, where it's either on the city's end, or it's on the Polaris vendor's end, or something in between that causes glitches like that, fairly rare, but we at least caught it, and we're able to inform the public, otherwise, we were worried that we would get a lot of calls saying, my materials are due, as part of that.
Got it, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so we can move forward with the trustee use report, Mary Bell, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'm excited that you're potentially going to have Echoes of Change folks back, I was, I missed it, and so I, I've been a little bit busy this month, so I haven't really been able to make my way over, I actually have to drop off my book club books, and I just got my notification that the one that, that has, I've been on the waitlist for, just came back in, so I'm excited about that, and I'm also looking forward to the genealogy drop-ins.
So my story's about my husband, and he was putting some aftermarket something or other on his truck, which is a Toyota, and he needed to learn about the electrical wiring, but the information was in a book, like a Toyota user manual, and he didn't want to buy the book, because it's a hundred eighty-five dollars to read two pages, so he's complaining, and I'm like, let's go to the library. And our library had the book, John Archer helped us, so it was perfect, and while I was there, I checked out other books, but I had a feeling, because I, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not a book checker outer, because I drive a lot, and so I listen to a lot of audiobooks, so I didn't check out a book in, in a long time, so I kind of, I remember that if you don't use your library card for a certain amount of time, it gets deactivated, so I was kind of expecting that, and that's exactly what happened, so I went to the desk and, and they reactivated it within thirty seconds, and then checked me out, and it was super convenient and easy, and so I just had a great experience, everyone was super helpful.
Question to that, so you check out online, like audiobooks with your library card?
Uh huh.
So does that not count as having the, your account active, that's interesting?
It depends on the service, for most of our online books, what it really does is just checking to see whether it is, the prefix of the library card actually is one that is registered, there are some that are more strict, and depends on the vendor and licensing model, but we're, we can, especially for ebooks and audiobooks, we try to be more lenient, which is why we allow those to be checked out using our online only cards, those are usually the cards that people get if they register online and haven't come in to show their group of ID, so it's kind of an easy way to get people hooked on special eOverDrive.
Got it, okay, because I, I recall, I've had to like put in my library card into some of the apps, good to know.
So I've, I had a chance to visit the booth at the Grape Day Fest and thought it was really well done, it was cool, nice little touch in detail to have the, I think it was the Safari Park, and that collection available for people to see, and I, I noticed people were looking at it before and after I left the booth, so just overall, it seemed like everyone that was walking around that festival had library totes, which is nice, so it was great to see the library there, I also had a chance to travel a couple times for weddings this past month to Ohio and Rhode Island, and in Ohio, I noticed the libraries have taken over the flagpoles and other poles in the area, and put their banners up within like a five-mile radius, so you knew the library was coming before you even had a chance to see it, which I thought was interesting, so libraries are thriving in all parts of the United States, that's good.
So my, my parents live in Texas, we don't get to see each other very frequently, but in our last FaceTime, they both showed me the books that they were reading, and so I went to the library and I, I checked them out, and now I'm reading them too, and I'll see them tomorrow, so we can talk about the books together, yeah.
Well, adjourn our meeting, thank you, everyone.